Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Parliament?
Yeah?
Here, I apologize everyone that I have to be on the phone again.
And Mayor Heinitz?
Here.
Do I have to start all over?
No.
Oh, shoot. It's happened so...
Shoot.
Motion carries. In front of you, you have the claims, pages 23 to 25. If there's any questions on anything there.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion to approve the claims as listed. Any questions anyone might have? None. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar, Brian, anything? No? Okay. At this point in time, we offer visitors a chance to communicate to the council. If you have an item that's already on the agenda, we would ask you to wait until that agenda item comes forward. But if there's anyone that would like to address the council at this point, please approach the mic and sign in. Ara, push the button.
Good evening. Dave Alphson, 1102 North Chestnut. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for the special meeting and addressing the annexation position and hope this kind of resolves this for quite some time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to, I think we have a public hearing. Our variance...
No hearing, but we have an appeal for a variance denial of 2820 East Augusta Circle.
Correct.
The property owner at 2820 East Augusta Circle constructed an accessory building without a permit within a five-foot rear yard setback on existing utility easement on his property. All three of those items are not allowed. The property owner appeared before the Board of Adjustment to appeal or ask for a variance. That request was denied. You've got all of the information, the minutes, and all the information that was given to the Board of Adjustment in your packet.
I don't believe the young man is here, is he? Or he is, okay. There he is, come on up.
Hello? So, yeah.
Your name, please.
Huh? Aaron Goodell. So I met, as he said, with the zoning. We went over it. Where I came from, I didn't know I needed a permit for a kennel. So that was my mistake. I admitted it, I apologized. I got with Paul on it. I began to go through the proper steps that we needed to get the permit, once we seen where it was sitting. I then went through the steps again to meet with the zoning committee. In my lot, there's three lots that are affected by this. My lot, the rest of them are flat. My lot is completely different. As you can, I don't know if you guys have the pictures that I sent in the hall. I tried to do the best I could to lay it out with tape measures and flags and everything so you could see. There's also another easement that runs down the side of it. So I tried to do the best I could to lay it out for you guys. On my property, it's very unique. It's not flat anywhere, in the whole property. The flattest place that I could find is where the building is sitting now. And once Paul told me that I needed a permit, of course, I stopped everything. So I have not touched the building, I have not done anything. The other thing is, is this building is not attached to the ground in any way. If in the foreseeable future that it did need to be moved or demolished or anything, I also talked with Paul. As my property is, there's actually a couple of pieces of paper that I signed for my driveway and other things that are also in the easement that I would say that I would sign also that if for some reason it needed to be demolished and/or moved, I would do so at my own expense. No problem, no questions, no anything. Or if it needed to be demolished in an emergency situation, again, I would clean it up or do whatever I needed to do at my own expense.
Aaron, I appreciate your willingness to do all of that. Our issue always is on these things is if we start with one person, we're setting precedent.
I understand that.
That's the issue, and I apologize for that, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and like, I'm not trying to start a precedent, you know, I'm just trying to take care of my dogs the best I can, so...
It's a really nice-looking kennel.
Yeah, I, yeah, I worked pretty hard on it, so...
I did listen to the P&amp;Z meeting, and one thing that stood out to me that, that I thought was problematic for you as well as for the city was with it being on the easement there, and there was talk about if there was an emergency, they have to come in and, you know, kind of, no commitment to what kind of shape that's going to be in. But I would also be concerned about your dogs, you know, if they had come in there in an emergency...
So my wife works from home, she's home every day, so if there was an emergency, she could go out and get my dogs. I mean, so they could be removed. She works from home every day.
And if I get a staff, wasn't there also discussion at that meeting, or Tim would know? The proposed bike path was an issue, is that correct?
Right, along with this easement, there's also a trail easement that goes through there. So if council decided to ever in the future put that trail system in, that's where it would go.
Tammy, this is Jack, I cannot hear you at all. Could you try that again?
Along with that utility easement, there's also a path easement. So once council would decide to put in that trail system in the future, then that's the location that it would go to.
Is there an area on your, on your property that, I mean, it looks like a fairly large kennel, I see that. Is there another area that would be doable, permissible?
No, sir, not, not really.
Not here?
Not, not, not really. That's, that's why I kind of picked that spot, it was literally the flattest spot, and where it's sitting now, it's actually 10 inches out of level where it's sitting right now. And it's, that's the flattest spot that I could find. And like I said, it's not attached to the ground, it sits on posts, it sits on top of the ground.
I can see that.
So Tim, do you have any comments as chair of P&amp;Z?
I guess on this one, I would tend to side with the Planning and Zoning Commission on this. It is, you know, I've sat through a lot of variance hearings, to prove a hardship is very difficult. Grade and slope does not make it unique. One of our planning and zoning members is also a builder. They had to bring in like six feet of fill on a walkout lot to make it, you know, walkoutable, otherwise he said it was a jumpout lot instead of a walkout lot. So it's not really variance-worthy. Also, we just, it is not a good idea to build in any sort of utility easement, a fence, a kennel, anything, because yes, if there's an emergency, they'll come in and just demolish whatever's there. We have, it's very clear in our ordinance that if you are in an easement, whether it's the city, whether it's another utility that wants, has to have access to that easement, whatever's there will be taken out at the owner's expense. So I don't see a reason to overturn what the Planning and Zoning Commission did.
Thank you, Tim.
I have a quick question. Then how, Tim, with this, how long does he have then to move it with winter, I mean, with winter?
I'll do that.
Does Brian?
Yeah, I talked to Paul after, during the meeting with the Board of Adjustment. You know, June, June 1st, it's winter time now, so now would not be a great time to be moving a building around or bringing fill in or whatever to make it level. So, you know, sometime next, next spring would be the appropriate time.
Any other questions that anyone has?
Is there, from P&amp;Z standpoint, was there any other reason besides the fact that he didn't apply for a permit and that it's in the easement step, the variance was denied?
The variance was denied because there was not a hardship demonstrated. In order to grant a variance, there has to be a hardship or something unique about the property, and at this point in time, the Board of Adjustment did not find that to be met. There are other options as to where to move the building. It may require additional fill or pilings or something to make it level, but it's still a feasible alternative to building in the easement. So no hardship was demonstrated.
Alyssa, would you like to say something?
Thank you.
Young lady.
Yeah. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Tealy, 200 Maureen Drive. I'm also on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did deny the variance request because, as you heard, the applicant did not demonstrate any hardship. He said tonight he doesn't really have a better place on his yard to move that structure, but we think that he does. He mentioned that he has some underground sprinkler system, but our city law says that a hardship cannot be something you caused your own self. We have to follow the law. And yes, if there's an emergency, they, the, in the easement, they can demolish or move his structure, but that takes time. In an emergency situation, time is always very important. And so those are the reasons that we denied his request and that we recommend to you that you also, uh, vote, see that, what's the word I'm looking for? Agree. Yeah. Different, I was looking for a different word, but you get the idea. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah.
So at this point, unless there's any other questions, I would entertain a motion, I assume, Brian, to either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal of the variance. Other comments, questions anyone might have? Hearing none. Take a, we'll vote, all those in, in the... Do you want to do a roll call? That's fine. This is to deny the request.
Deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal. Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Six zero.
But he does have till June 1st, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get together with Paul, but I don't anticipate anything needing to happen until winter is done.
Done with, okay, but...
Wish you well, Aaron. Figure it out. Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Moving on to old business, we have a second reading of ordinance number 652 amending off-street parking.
This would allow driveways up to 40-foot in width. Right at the moment, it's 40 feet or half the lot width, which is, whichever is less, and then that measurement would be taken at the sidewalk instead of the property line.
Do you need a motion to approve this?
Yep.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 652 amending off-street parking. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Ironwood Extension Project, which we've been visiting about. Brian, you want to go through what you've done?
Yeah, I just consolidated the information from DGR into a spreadsheet that was a little bit ligger, a little bit larger, a little bit larger font. You know, the owner, the property owners are listed there over on the left. The original is what's contained in the preliminary assessment report and schedule. Option one was including portion of Aspen Park. Option two would take that portion of Aspen Park up to what is currently improved, the south half would be included. And then option three would include the entirety of Aspen Park in determining the city's share of those assessment costs. The original project, the city would pay for $805,000 at the anticipated $1.8 million. Option one, the south portion of the park, that would increase to almost $1.2 million. Option two, which is the unimproved portion of the park, would increase at $1.26. And then if the whole park was included, the city's share would be $1.4 million. So just a summary of, something you could read.
That's, that's good. I, and that's what we asked you to do, is to look at this from a standpoint of stronger city, city input, and I think that you've done, done well with that, appreciate that. Again, I, I believe that this is a project that we, we need to, we need to get done. I think an entrance into that park benefits the city a great deal. It's hard for me to know whether, you know, there's five or six property owners, whether or not they're going to benefit from this, you know, will have to be determined at some point, I guess, and, but I do believe that this is a project that needs to move forward.
I have a question. I know, I think we talked about this on Thursday. Can this be, I know we need another second park entrance, but can this be delayed? I mean, what's the rush of...
There's, there's no emergency here. You know, it can certainly be delayed for a little bit. You know, I don't think we would want to delay it, you know, more than a year or two in anticipation of, you know, soccer and hockey have anticipation or plans to start construction in the next couple of years. I think that would be a driving force that we would want this second entrance into Aspen Park prior to those facilities being constructed. But you do, it's not an emergency, you know, there's, there's nothing changing with the operation of the parks right at the moment. Yes, there are some issues when there's severe weather and there's tournaments and the park is full, getting people in and out, but...
Sure. How do others feel about postponing this, Tim?
So in our, in our CIP that we did, did we include this project? And if we did, do we remember how much we included for it?
I believe I included $100,000 for the city cost per year. Are you talking about total?
Total.
It's $1.4.
$1.4? $1.4.
What's total cost?
That was the total cost, or that was the city's question? We didn't know.
Right, we didn't know.
We didn't know.
Well, we budgeted $1.4.
And now we're anticipating a cost of $1.8?
Correct.
Which always scares me if...
The city's share was $1.4.
Yeah, the city's...
Oh, the city's share was $1.4.
No, no. Total cost for the project was $1.4 at the time we did the CIP, because we didn't have the breakdown of, of city's share versus assessable cost. So now the project is $1.8, and we're seeing that trend with all of the projects.
I know.
And we'll have a little discussion about project costs or bids that we see coming in at the next council, maybe just to scare you a little bit.
And that's what scares me about delaying this. If it's $1.4 a year ago and it's $1.8 this year, what's it going to be? And, and again, it may, it may put even more burden on individuals that live in that area if we wait longer and longer and longer. So I mean, it's a catch-22 a little bit, I don't have a great answer. Again, I'm, I'm... The hard part for me is to, to know, and I, I would, you know, like to know the impact it's going to have on the, on the landowners in that area. Will they be benefiting from it or not benefiting from it? If they're not, I understand, you know, at some point, we will have to deal with that. But obviously, there's got to be benefit to others than just the city. And who makes that determinate, determination of, of...
You guys do.
Whether or not there's value gained.
The council does.
Council does?
You know, something we've talked about a little bit, in other jurisdictions, I'm not sure it's done quite a lot, you know, attempts to get a pre-appraisal done. I've seen that done by some jurisdictions, you know. I don't know what that would come out to be, or who would even be willing to do it, but we could certainly reach out to some appraisers in the area and see if they've, A, done them, and B, if they'd be willing to do it here. At least it would give us an estimated increase in property value.
I mean, because we, I will, I'm all, I just want to be fair to the, to the landowners, we, we have to make sure that they're benefiting from this in terms of if we're going to assess them, is my thinking.
Correct, and that's required by law.
I do have a question with the assessment. How come, if I'm reading this right, we don't own the land that the road is going to be on that we're assessing these individuals for?
Correct.
Why are they getting charged for that? I know it says total cost of the road, but shouldn't we own that land first and then take that out of the assessment?
No, anytime you do a project, you look at total costs, including acquisition costs, construction costs, engineering costs, any costs associated with that project needs to be considered with, with the assessments. So that land acquisition cost, if in fact we need to pay for it, would be considered eligible cost.
And that is included in the $1.8 bid, bid, right?
I would be in favor of having those assessments done personally for fairness. And then my second question is, if we did assume Aspen Park, where would the other $400,000 come from that we didn't budget?
Well, we, we'll need to have that conversation. You know, we either borrow additional funds to cover that cost, or, you know, we're not quite at year-end yet, but, you know, that always popular fund balance, to take a look. That would certainly have some, potentially have some ripple effects on some projects further down the road.
Don't we ha, didn't we have $1.4 in the budget and based on this option three, we all, we would be at $1.4?
It was, the project cost, total project cost, not just the city's share, but the total cost of construction was $1.4 million in the CIP. The cost estimate now is $1.8.
Right, but we're...
We're going to spend $1.4?
No, we're going to spend $1.8 to build it.
Right.
We would assume $1.4 of the cost.
Right.
So $400,000 would be. So when we did projections and looking at debt service, we based it on a $1.4 million bond instead of a $1.8. So there's an additional $400,000 that has to come from either debt or fund balance.
Because we wouldn't get the assessments all upfront.
Correct. Well, assuming we would.
Yeah.
So what, what do we know we're building this year? The core?
Yes.
The, we're in...
The core, the retaining wall at the golf course.
Okay.
Big Sioux.
Big Sioux drainage.
Big Sioux drainage.
Water treatment plant.
Water treatment plant.
The water treatment plant's coming out of the water fund, though.
Correct. West Side trunk.
That's coming out of the sewer fund?
Yep.
I mean, I guess I would be, I would be in favor, I would like to go and review our CIP list before we start spending more money, especially since project costs seem to be going up.
I, I would kind of agree with Tim on that. I just feel like this project, yes, I understand, it's, it'd be nice, but we've been dealing with one entrance in that park for how long? I, I think not only we could delay it, but if it's going to go up that much, it, I don't know, I, I just feel like it'd be owed to the landowners to give a little more heads up than otherwise. Oh, here we go, we're going to assess you this big chunk of money. Plus, though, if we have a lot of other projects on there, it'd be nice to kind of figure out, prioritize.
You know, we have a number of the landowners here, I'd kind of like to, to hear from them. We've got some with developed property, we've got others with property that they want to develop in the future. I'm not sure what the timelines people are looking at, and I would be kind of curious as to, to hear some of that.
Anybody else want to talk?
If anybody wants to talk about it.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, Mike, go right in.
Diagram to kind of sum up what Brian did, or just color code this a little better. So leave one for Mike, hand those down, and then Brian, too. Just easier to kind of see who owns what, and then we'll all be proposing tonight. There's one error in there in Peterson Square footage, grabbing extra lot, they own elsewhere.
Again, I'm Mike Coughlin with, I guess, the owner of Cobal. And, you know, after living here for 42 years, you know, I've seen a lot of different things coming up. I see Brandon right now as we're really struggling with infrastructure costs, which is really hurting Brandon in itself. And in my estimation, and I don't know if it's even possible, is there any way that we can do some sort of bond in the city of Brandon, vote on, and pass all of these costs on to the, the people that live in Brandon? We're talking corridor streets where Redwood, Chestnut, Ironwood, Park Street Maple, the core area of Brandon, Interstate Exchange, continuation of maybe taking out Old Sioux and rebuilding that. You know, this should be, all of these projects benefit everybody that lives in Brandon. You know, not a one of us, except barring myself maybe, because I do own Cobal, for future development. You know, we, if we had Park Street Maple, we probably wouldn't need the access on Ironwood. But again, that's a five, 10 years down the road. Basically, these properties cannot be developed, which I think it ties into Justin's development. It's like we have a hole in the middle of the city that's not being developed. All these tax dollars that could be generated by building would help the city in some regards. But like I say, it all depends on roads, and you're holding back, well, there's 50 acres there, so approximately, you know, 100, 150 homes, or businesses, or commercial areas that could really benefit the city of Brandon. Or businesses or commercial areas that could really benefit the city of Brandon in the future. So, I, I would, to me, it's like we, we should consider some way, and I've talked to many people, it's like, I don't even know what it would take to add on to your tax dollars for the next ten years. You know, it is a hundred bucks a year for everybody, you know, Brandon's a pretty well-to-do community, you know, nice homes, there's a few. People maybe can't pay that much, um, in my particular case with Koval, I expect to pay a fair share, you know, for the future development. Several of them in here, it's not going to benefit them one, one ounce, you know. It's, it's just going to bring more traffic to them, uh, past their house. But on the other hand, uh, this road is needed for Aspen Park. It's a vital part of Brandon. We have people coming in from, from Brandon to the ball complex from everywhere. And they're seeing Brandon, and if we're lacking these roads, you know, that, and especially access, I think Brandon should be very proud of what they have and continue to build on that. But, uh, I'm just suggesting, you know, if there's any way possible, it might take a little delay on Ironwood. I think we need to get it done as fast as we can, somehow pass some of these corridor projects on to the residents of Brandon. And that includes everybody. Thank you.
Brian, is that possible? I mean, is that something like Mike talked about, like a, a bond for some of all these roads or?
Well, the core, the core, the Rushmore area reconstruction are being funded out of the general fund. We are doing no special assessments on reconstruction projects. We've typically, we've only done special assessments on new construction. So, in essence, all of the, all of the reconstruction projects are getting paid by everybody in the city.
Yep.
Anyone else? I forgot, one comment I forgot to make, you know. If we get caught up on these roads, which we've been behind, you know, the last ten, twelve years for sure. You know, the people of Brandon help pay for those. You know, all the extra fund needed, we could build, uh, the parks, hockey, baseball, water treatment plant, sewer, police station, maintenance, city hall, golf course. All of those funds could go to much needed projects, but if, if you look at Brandon, I mean, for the next ten years, what are we going to do? We're going to build roads at the city's, you know, out of, out of budget that we can't afford. So, it's like, to me, it's like, just bite the bullet and put it in our taxes and let everybody pay for it. Get, get Brandon rolling again where it used to be. Anyone else?
I will say just one thing to that, and the last time we tried to pass a bond issue for the city of Brandon was for Aspen Park, right?
Correct.
And it failed by what percentage?
Do I really need to say it?
Out loud, please.
It was, it was ninety-four to six. So, we'd love to pass a bond. But you've got to remember that those were baseball pretty much only.
Yeah.
How many people play baseball in Brandon are involved in the baseball? But it still gets back to the water treatment plant is being paid for all of the residents who have a water connection in town through their rates. The sewer improvements are all being paid by the users of the sewer system. All of the reconstruction projects are being paid by everybody in town through sales tax, revenue bonds, and general property taxes. The only time we're using special assessments again is when we construct a new road. The courts have ruled that assessing existing infrastructure, reconstruction of existing infrastructure is virtually impossible in the state of South Dakota. So, we are not special assessing these reconstruction projects. Those are being paid out of general fund tax dollars.
I really believe Tim might be on the right track with us looking a little bit more at our capital improvement plan. I'd hate to see even this get done at, you know, in, in some of the projects that we already started on be put to the side. I don't think that's quite where we want to go with this either. I do believe it's important to have, but I do believe we, we should take some time to look at our, our CIP before we make any kind of a commitment to the project.
Justin Oakland, two thirteen West Holly Boulevard Suite D. D is in dog, so I saw that was not quite corrected yet, uh, which is okay. Anyway, um, there's two ways to build a road, publicly and privately. So, currently, this is the public way, right? Or you can build it privately, so privately would be Mr. Coughlin needs access to his Koval development. Peterson family needs access to their development. They'd come to the city, say they want a road, city would say, hire your own engineer, build your own road, right? Pay for it, and then they'd say, well, how do my neighbors pay for this? Well, you go assess them. Well, that's hard to do, isn't it? That's what we're here talking about. It's hard to assess people. So, it's my opinion that this is actually done fairly well. We talked last meeting about the short notice and the timeframe to work on this. I've worked on it pretty hard this weekend. I think we've come a long ways on the design schedule. I think we're almost done. I think we need to proceed with what we're doing here, Mayor. I think this needs to go through to show how this goes publicly. Uh, we could get bids back if we shape up this plan that you have here. We could get bids back for under one point four million. The city could then pay for the whole project or help reduce the burden on some of the homeowners who aren't necessarily benefiting. Not to throw Coughlin under the bus, but he's getting a heck of a deal here. The city's helping pay, the park is bringing every taxpayer into this. So, the city is helping pay for that road to Koval. That's, the city is helping pay for the road to Peterson Ground. Do I benefit from this? I think I have a pretty good argument. I think I presented what I would argue to you here in, in full color. I think it sums up who the property owners are a little bit better. It just kind of does what Brian did. I liked what he did there with the options. Obviously, Brian and I have talked at his informational meeting. We'll leave the math up to the engineers. But if we could find some ways to maybe cut some fluff out of this proposal, maybe cut one of the sidewalks off. Maybe we don't need fabric underneath twelve inches of gravel down on top of gravel, right? So, we can cut some gravel out of this thing. We can definitely maybe look at some of the engineering fees. We can ta- take a look at cutting one of the ten-foot wide, six-inch thick sidewalks out of the deal. Hopefully, excavation would come in a little bit lower. Mobilization always kills me. Uh, you can ask all my contractors, I, I don't understand how it costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move your stuff out to Brandon to work, but apparently it, semis are expensive. So, there's some things in here, I think, that could be looked at, and I want, I guess what I'm saying is I want you to move forward. We've come this far. Finish the design, put it out to bid, when it comes back for bid, and maybe it's a million four, maybe it's two million, we won't know till we put it out to bid. And then we'll know what it costs to build a road publicly, and at that time, we can say, hey, Mr. Koval, uh, the Petersons, you build it privately. But we haven't had time here to look at the private side of it because we just got hit with this the end of November. But we've come that far, let's, let's not stop this, let's finish this, let's see what we're getting here, let's see the numbers. And then at that point, you guys can award the bid or not. You can say, no, it's way too high, we're not voting to accept any of these bids. Or, hey, we're, that came in great, we're accepting the low bid. Again, I think this is done fairly well, uh, fairly quick. I'm impressed, actually, so I wouldn't quit now.
I have a question though, Justin. You, this is all your land too though, right?
Correct, yep.
And you're going to plan to develop that?
Yep, that's, I.
I think you would have, well, at least the residents of homes, because they, they would use this road to get to Ironwood, would they not?
I don't know if anyone will ever build that or be forced to build that.
This little section here?
Right, that's, that's out of my control. That would be the Peterson land developer, whether that's the Petersons, whether.
So, all your homes would still go out on Evergreen?
Yeah, I have five other access, not Evergreen, no. I have five other access, or four other access points aside from Evergreen or Ironwood.
Okay.
And so, that, that becomes a little dicey too, that now you're basically assessing your future potential clients or your future potential homeowners that are going to buy those homes from me? You're saying, hey, you're going to for sure drive on Ironwood and we're going to tax you, right?
No, I'm not saying that.
Well, that's it, to bring those in, that's how I feel about it, to bring those, that chunk of that land into the equation. I think that's already serviced by my own, my own land, under my own roads, with my own fire hydrants, my own streetlights. I have no benefit, I have not enough land currently to hook to Ironwood. I need sixty-six feet, I have fifty-five feet. So, therefore, my argument is I have one fifty-five foot wide lot that needs a driveway off of Ironwood. And I think, uh, with everything I've put together in this short month, I think I have a pretty good case. You know, worst case, I pay you fifty thousand dollars in Plan C, so really, I'm here to fight about fifty thousand dollars. Again, I think Koval's getting a steal at a hundred and fifty, uh, Petersons are getting a steal at seventy-eight thousand. The other three homeowners, really isn't that bad. I think there's some room to prove their point or prove what this does to their property. They probably have pretty good arguments as well, and then I think I have a pretty good argument. I think the city paying for the entire park, Plan C, is the right thing to do. That does do what Mike wants. That brings every taxpayer into this. And so, again, done fairly well. I think the, the numbers could be fixed or that some fluff taken out of the road and this could be done differently or more well enough to get it done.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah.
I have a couple of, not for your questions, but I have a couple of questions. So, this ironwood, if we build it, are we building it as an arterial street? No, it won't be built to those standards, but it will be built to.
It's above a little, it's a little bit above a local street. A local street should have two lanes. This one, we would do three lanes, so that there is a turn lane.
Okay. And the city typically, if, if it's anything above a local street, we end up paying for the upsizing, right?
Correct.
So, we would be paying for that third lane. Even if this were undeveloped land on both sides, we would pay for the turn lane. But if it was undeveloped land on both sides, the street would be accessed to the people who are building or developing land on both sides. Yes. And yes, Vicki, unfortunately, the amount of land that Justin owns is not wide enough for a street to access the rest of his development. The only way he benefits from Ironwood is if a street is built to his property.
On the other side, like Petersons?
No, through. Yeah.
Could one go between Petersons and the city then?
It's, it's actually, it's designed to go. Yeah.
If we ever can.
Right, so what he, what he's benefiting from is a driveway off of Ironwood to a really big house lot.
Really deep house lot, yes.
Very deep house lot.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, where I'd struggle with this, I guess, is that typically, when you build a brand-new street, it's because it's a brand-new development and so it's a brand-new area. So, then, uh, the assessments are done, but they're not, they're done to the developers and the costs are kind of passed through to the lots. And so, the people who buy the lots end up paying for those assessments, but they don't know they did.
Right.
When you have people who already own a house on a lot and then you assess them, well, it's really hard to show that same benefit as it would be to a street that accesses undeveloped land that now is going to be developed, now is going to have city streets and all the other stuff. So, I do, this one's hard because I, I think that there are a few landowners that, that shouldn't be a part of it. I don't know.
The good news, Tim, is you guys are the assessment board.
Yeah.
So, it's, you're in a very powerful or very unique situation. I think some of the Redwood attorneys spoke to that, that this is a very big power that the city has. You guys are everything here tonight. You're the owner of the park, you're the developer, you're the, you're the judge and jury here tonight, you're the assessment board in the future. And again, I've looked into all that and I, this is done fairly well. And to my sixty-six foot Tim's talking about, I didn't just extend my road for fun, hoping to hook to Ironwood someday. I did that because you guys are future, or excuse me, past councils, uh, require that kind of stuff. That's a design feature to, to benefit the future of the city someday, that, hey, we're not just going to dead-end that development. It's going to continue through, there's going to be connectivity with sidewalks, with traffic, with emergency management. You know, do I benefit from it? No, I have four other access points. You, the park owners, have one other access point. So, I, I have four, I have enough. Again, I have one really deep fifty-five foot wide lot is, is what I think, so thank you.
Tammy, on the, um, the wider sidewalks for the shared use path, we pay that up charge.
We do, yep.
And I think that that's, that's an important feature for our town to continue doing, because before, we've shorted ourselves on sidewalks.
Yes.
I would just maybe mention to the council that, you know, one of the things that you look at is the reasonable expectation of future uses for the land. So, I think you can look at the land and say, is this going to get developed? Because that, if so, that's a, if, a reasonable expectation of that land, and the assessment might be for that landowner because the reasonable expectation is that developed. But maybe one of the other parcels, there's no reasonable expectation of development and you don't assess the same amount. So, what I'm trying to say is, you know, the, um, Buheims have all this land, what's the reasonable expectation that all of that gets developed? If you decide it's never going to get developed, doesn't mean you have to assess them the same as the Petersons or the Koval. So, you can look at, you have to set the assessment fair to the special benefit for that land.
And I'm okay with that, but what, how do you base that? I mean, what do you base that on? You just can't pull it out of the air.
Well, that's, that's why I'm totally in favor of us doing, having a real estate appraiser come in and give us some guidance.
And I think part of that is, you, you hear from a couple of people here that we are planning on developing that area. You might hear from a couple of the property owners, we will never, and then you have to decide, is that credible, is that not credible? Well, it's more likely than not that this person is actually going to develop this section. That's for your decision to make. You know, how much land is out there? Is it reasonable that that person's never going to develop that? I mean, you're going to make those decisions as the, the council.
Kathy Buheim, one five one two South Sioux Boulevard. I have a lot of the same points that others have made here this evening, um, so I won't get into all of them, but I do believe that this should be on hold. This road does not need to be pushed through, and I'm wondering, why would we push the road through before the park development has been made? So, two thousand nineteen, we went to a ton of master plan meetings for the park. The park has not expanded yet. We would be building this road to nowhere right now. It's not that we are against the road. I think that, I want to make sure that I, um, clarified that last time when I was at the podium, I said as it was proposed. So, I just, my husband and I do believe that the road is a good thing. It's just that it's being forced upon us right now, and those assessments are still really, really high, still after those, um, recalculations. I do disagree with, uh, Mr. Oakland. I do think that his property will benefit from it. We've all seen the plans. If that goes through to Ironwood as his proposal is, this road would go through Peterson's property. If you live in this, this property right here that he has proposed, and you're going to have to exit all the way here, that's not really viable for those homeowners. We know that all of this traffic out of this development will come down that new road, um, if that gets, if that gets extended to Ironwood, and it'll be on us property owners. And I want to reiterate, property owners, three of us are homeowners there, three out of the six folks that are being assessed here, uh, seven now with the city. But I just want to, this is a really good visual of what that property development is looking like. This is the Peterson property, and this is our property here on the corner.
And a quick question for you, Kathy. Now, you have two parcels that would be assessed, correct?
Correct.
Is one of them developable or is it just a part of your house and?
In our eyes, it's, we are not having any intentions of developing our property. I mean, we are both small-town kids, we grew up on small hobby farms, we wanted the space, we wanted no neighbors. We're, we have that right now with that. The, the folks that are, you know, further down the road, um, Mr. Coughlin and Mr. Oakland, they have developments planned and in the works. I really would appreciate, um, as he was talking about, taking some of the fluff out. There are some things, I believe, that are in the budget and those line items that could be cost-saving measures. Right now, just a couple of those would be, um, the need for the sidewalks on both sides. The access point, if Petersons are not going to be developing that road, why would we have that in the plan to make a huge intersection at that level of that cost? And why would that be assessed to all six or seven of us when that's going to benefit Peterson and Oakland eventually? These new options that came through, if I was Justin, I would be ecstatic about it also. His got reduced by seventy percent, seventy-one point eight, six percent on option three. Mine was only changed at forty-three percent from my home and fifty-six percent. seventy-one-point-eight-six percent on option three. Um, mine was only changed at forty-three percent from my home and fifty-six percent. So, I'm going to go back to the question I emailed, um, on December sixteenth. I requested a specific formula for the allocations on this project or an equation, A plus B equals C or minus whatever out of these projects. I think each homeowner would appreciate, um, an itemized list. And I know these are just cost estimates at this time, but I think that that would really help us in layman's terms. This is not what I do every day like Justin. Um, but I do think that that, there is some benefit to us property owners. Um.
Kathy, are you asking about how the assessment was figured or?
Yes. Because these new numbers here, like I said, that we all are at different, um, reductions for option one, two, and three, and they're all different all the way across. So, by percentage rates, it just doesn't.
It really doesn't work out with percentage. It depends on the, on the infrastructure improvements and what methods we use. And I did get her email and I started typing that up. I am not going to finish that.
Okay. I would appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
Kathy, could you describe, just so they understand, um, is your house on which lot as Brian's? Is it, is it on lot one?
Lot one.
And then what do you have, anything on lot six? Do you have a whole barn? Do you have anything?
Nothing. It's vacant land. Mm-hmm. When we first moved to town and purchased the property, our intention was to build a house for ourselves on the additional land. We were not, um, approved for a curb cut onto Sioux. And then the other, um, item we were told is depending on where our placement was for the home, that we would have to have a paved driveway, um, a paved driveway to an easement that is there right now to gravel. So, we have postponed our home, um, building, obviously, and we're staying where we're at.
So, looking at this then, Brian, Stark and Drexler, I mean, obviously, what you see is, that's what it's ever, there's not going to be anything, any development done possibly. I mean, and it looks to me like, Kathy, is it possible? It's possible. But on the other two, I think I don't see anything, right?
Highly unlikely. Never, you know, never say never, but highly unlikely.
No, I, I hear you.
Their homes are kind of right in the middle of their property where they can't, I mean, you really can't, so, yeah.
Plus, I got a full schedule. We had to pull another home.
Yeah.
It would more than likely require somebody, if somebody purchased the land, they would have to raise all the property to do any sort of development and.
They'd have to do what?
Rate, raise. It's a fancy term for tear down.
Okay. Thanks. Didn't know that mattered.
You're welcome.
Well, I think, thank, thank you, Kathy. I think, wait, you know, again, I think this comes down to two issues. One, going back to the, to the capital improvement plan, will going ahead and doing this right now, will that negate the ability to do some other things? And that's where I still probably think Tim's suggestion of looking at that before you make any kind of a decision is a, is a good, good plan. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't bring this back here over the next several meetings, but until we've had a chance to look at that, I, I would, I would like to see us do that.
Um, is there a way, so is it ready to go to bid?
Final plans are not ready.
How, how much farther does that going to take?
End of the year.
So, two weeks, week?
Yeah. They're close.
How, how much more is it going to cost to finish? We've already paid for that, right?
Well, we're already under contract for that. We have not billed everything out of that contract yet. That contract goes through bidding.
How much, how much more would it take us to get the bids in before we do the CIP so that we actually know the numbers that come through?
So, we could go to bid in January. Um, just know that once we receive the bids, you have thirty days to either award it or scrap it.
Because, you know, to, to follow up with what Justin said, we're, we are just guessing, I guess. So, I'm not sure, following Tim's line of questioning, you know, unless it's going to cost us a huge amount, I don't know. Maybe we should go put it out for bid just so we see what it is and then go back to the CIP. I don't know. Otherwise, we're just kind of guessing.
Well, we'd have to get the bid first and then the CIP, right? Especially, I don't know.
CIP is going to be tough to do in February because I got end-of-year numbers due, any reports to get together. There's a lot of information that I got to gather for that CIP. That was going to be more April. It would be a, a guess, a guess, an estimate really at that time.
Sure. I, I think the CIP money's in there at a million-four. The trick here is to finish the design with the engineer and get it designed at a million-four or less. Um, it's pretty easy to do. I can help you do it if you need help. I've got everything highlighted and marked what I think is possibly over-engineered or, or wasteful. Um, I asked last time about the speed of this, right? And I asked about the timeline and I found the timeline. Tammy was able to get me the contracts for DGR. And in here, we are at the December twentieth council meeting with final plans and specs to be done by December twenty-second. So, that's the end of this week. Let's be honest. Let's give them till the end of the year. And then we've got the bid letting on January twentieth and then potential to award the project February seventh, which was all talked about at the last meeting. Staff was fully aware of this, uh, good job. And then if you award the project, there'd be notice to proceed and start to build April twenty of twenty-two. Uh, we've come this far. I don't think we need to quit now. Let's spend the extra ten percent to get the final drawings done. So, ten percent of eighty-seven thousand would be about eighty-seven hundred, Tim. It would be my anticipation to get the plans to one hundred percent. Obviously, that can fluctuate a little bit based on hours is how this is designed. You guys approved this on November first of two thousand twenty-one. You approved this eighty-seven thousand and for this process to start. We can't quit now here, December twentieth. Uh, let's get the final numbers. Let's get them in under a million-four and then we can all talk. The CIP is a, is a mute point. I, I see where you want to go with it, Tim, but I think we're past that.
I wouldn't recommend designing it to one-point-four million and cutting corners.
I, I don't think we are.
No, I'm just letting you know, the city of Brandon has done a very wonderful job of cutting corners in the past and we are paying for it now. If the city is going to build a road project, we are going to build it correctly.
Okay.
We are not going to cut corners. We are going to build it correctly. If that comes in at higher than the budgeted estimate, then that's what it comes in at. But no more cutting corners. It always comes back to haunt the city in the future and we are paying for it now.
So, a quick look at the CIP. How much was in the CIP for Redwood roughly? And what are, where are we going to, six?
Six million, that's a moot point, right? At the moment, we're not doing Redwood.
No, I know. So, we're not doing it. So, do, can we reallocate that money in the CIP come April or where does that go?
That was all going to be borrowed money.
Okay. There, that's.
We didn't have that money.
Fair enough. I asked. I thought it was worth asking.
Well, again, and I don't disagree with you, Justin, and I appreciate your comments. And, um, Brian, I, I guess I'd like some direction from you on, on this. I mean, I hate to stop. I don't think anyone is suggesting that we stop the process. I just, just try to be careful that we don't do one thing and take it from another thing. That's my only concern.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we're not stopping.
No.
You know, there's a couple of things that, that the council could do. Um, at some point in the future, we're going to need some direction as to which option the council kind of is favoring, whether it's the original one all the, all the way through option three. We could certainly, I could, I could reach out to some appraisers if, if that would maybe help set your minds at ease, see if they'd be willing to come in and, and. It's pretty easy to do an appraisal now, but it's in a, it's, it's the.
You know.
Estimated appraisal after the improvement that might get a little tricky, but I can certainly reach out to some and see if they'd be interested, number one, in doing it.
I have a question, Brian. So, these plans that G, or DGR are doing, it's not like they have a shelf life, right? I mean, the road's going to be the road. Obviously, we know the costs might adjust.
Correct.
But whether we get these plans and they get to us or not, it's not like, oh, we got to.
It, it doesn't matter if we do the plans in the next couple of weeks or if we wait six months to do them. The plans are going to be the plans.
And then what?
And those, the shelf life on those plans are going to be good. If you don't want to bid it until ten years from now, I don't see those plans changing. It's still going to be a turn lane. It's still going to be sidewalks. It's going to be sewer and water installed, et cetera. So.
Let me ask one quick other question. It, it seems like, I mean, I, first of all, I appreciate your comments about not designing a project to a number. Design it the way it should be designed. That, that's, that's, makes a lot of sense to me, but it sounds like we're, we're quite a ways along already in this process. So, at this point, I think you're recommending that we at least get through the bid letting and see where we're at.
Well, we can, we can certainly get, you know, we delayed or I delayed the, the final plans until we kind of get a little further and get a little direction as to assessment costs. We can get those, I shouldn't say we, DGR could probably get those plans done relatively quickly. At that point in time, I think their cost estimate is fairly valid right at the moment, although we're starting to see bids, um, between eleven and eighteen percent higher than engineers' estimates, the last two bid projects. So, they're, they're substantially higher than what we've seen in the past. So, we'll talk about that at the next meeting, just to give you fair warning. Um, so, we could do the plans and then when, when the plans are done, we could say, hey, we'll, we'll bid it in January, February, March, anytime. Once those plans are done, they're done. So, the, at some point in time, the road is going to get constructed, whether it's now or five years from now. We can do those plans.
So, obviously, Brian, I think we get better cost estimates in January than we do April, right? So, these guys fill up their pipeline starting after the holidays. Once they know they've got some big jobs secured, once you start bidding stuff in April, May, the price goes up because guys have their workload determined for the year. Uh, so, you got to be careful with that, too.
So, onto that, onto that note, that's a good point when we're looking at really large projects. This is a smaller project and some of those contractors are going to see this more as kind of their filler work. So, they're going to be chasing those big projects. So, it might not be terrible to bid this later either. This one can go both sides.
Yep.
Again, if you, if we do the plans, even if we bid it, regardless of when you bid it, if you don't like the numbers, you throw the bids out and rebid at a later date.
Sure.
So.
All I'm asking is finish the plans. That's, that's my deal here.
Thank you, Justin. Well, again, I, I guess it's up to, I mean, I'm not quite as worried about the assessments. I mean, in my eyes, it would be difficult for Drexler, Stark, uh, the homes that are already there. I don't know. I mean, even if we didn't assess them, this isn't going to make or break the cost of this project. So, I'm, I guess I'm, that to me can be determined at a later time. I think, I think we need to move forward with this.
I think the council should be cautious when you are constructing a new road, just like we've talked about before. When someone buys a parcel in a new subdivision, they're paying that road cost, that infrastructure cost. It would, it would be a precedent to set. The city would build a road and not pass those costs on to the benefited property owners in some fashion.
Right. That's, I guess what I'm saying, right.
Is always the catching point in special assessment projects. But if you don't special assess that, then what incentive does any developer have to build a road?
Sure.
Just come to the city and have the city build the road for you. Does anybody ever ask what we'd be willing to pay? No.
But to be clear, to be, to be clear on this, now, if we went with, say, we went with option two or option three, the numbers that are, are on there for these properties are not, they're not set in concrete at that point. Um, we would go through the, the next process of the assessment, my understanding, and, and we would say.
So, you guys approved that on November first, is the Ironwood Improvement Project Final Design Proposal? And that was my whole point at the December sixth meeting, is how did we get this far this quick, right? And all that is in that packet from the council meeting November first and it's the timeline from the, from there. And so, in there, we're going to get to where you, it's called the assessment role, the preliminary assessment role. Is that correct, Brian? But we can't get the preliminary assessment role without sending this out to bid. Once we get the preliminary, preliminary assessment role, there'll be a meeting. We can all come and say, here, has anyone asked me what I'm willing to pay? Here's what I'm willing to pay, ten cents on the dollar. Will you agree with me? You guys are now the, the board, the committee. Then, maybe I don't like what you say that night. I have one more opportunity, right? Because there'd be a final assessment role. And then I'd say, hey, wait, wait. Remember last time I told you I didn't like the number? Can you work with me this time? So, that all happens before February seventh? Is that right, Brian? Or around then? Around the bid letting, around the awarding? When does the assessment roles hit?
Final assessment role isn't developed until the bids are in.
That's the last question. I couldn't fill in the rest of the puzzle on that piece. So, anyway, again, I haven't had much time to work on this, but.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate that the homeowners might be willing to pay something. Your job, though, is to decide what the special benefit is. You can set that. You can certainly, after you set the special benefit, this property receives a special benefit of thirty thousand dollars, whatever the case may be. You certainly can have discussions with the homeowners to say, you know, this is what we think it is. Um, are you willing to pay that over the course of X, Y, Z time? You know, that is something you can work on so you don't have a court trial. But I, while I appreciate there might be some amount that they're willing to pay, that's not really one of the considerations when you say, what is a special benefit to this property of what they're willing to pay? So, you, I, I don't mind having some discussion about what they're willing to pay, but that's really not one of the considerations of what the special benefit is to that property. So, um, it shouldn't be a factor in setting the amount. Certainly can be a factor in trying to have an agreement worked out with everybody in the end, but I just want to caution you on that. But I appreciate, Troy, that you are willing to pay something. I just want to make sure we do this correctly according to the law. Thank you.
So, what you're saying is you would like us to approve an option and then from there, the negotiations can happen afterwards?
Well, yeah, I'd like you to, it doesn't, I don't, an amount, because you can say option one, two, three, or four. You can certainly say, you know what? We think, um, this house receives a smaller special benefit because that's never going to be developed. So, we have all these options on here, but it's for the council to say, in the end, lot number one receives a special benefit of A, lot two, B, and, and have some considerations of how you're making that. So, I don't want you to just pick an option and say it's going to be this because I think you're going to have to use some discretion on, if that amount within whatever option is a starting point is appropriate.
The options that are just how much of the park property are to be considered. And the reason we want to have some methodology for the park property to be considered is because in the future, if you come up with another special assessment project that doesn't have a park property on it, you've got to justify why the city absorbed a higher cost on Ironwood than you did on the next street, if there's no city property involved with it. In this instance, it just matters how much of the park do you want to include in the assessment process.
I, I, I go for option three because we keep talking this whole, why, why we have to build this road is because of the park. So, I think it only makes sense that it should be option three where the whole park is assessed.
We're not deciding tonight what option.
You don't, you don't have to?
No.
At, at some point in the very, very near future, either tonight or maybe at the next meeting, we would, we would like some directions to.
We're not deciding the assessments.
Does that have to be in a form of a motion?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not looking at the num, the assessments aren't being decided tonight.
No, I thought you wanted to know what option.
Yes. What methods?
Do you want to make a motion?
Ken?
Is that, we're, we're just telling you what option, right?
Make it as a motion.
Make a motion that I, I say option three where the whole park is being assessed.
So, proceed, proceed utilizing option three, including the entire Aspen Park property?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to proceed with the project using option three?
Recognizing that these numbers are not set in stone by any means.
Okay.
Just the option.
Any other questions?
So, to clarify, by approving option three, then we're asking the engineer to finish the plans and send this out to bid, right? We're going to finish the plans, including option three to include the whole park, and then we're going to send this out to bid and have another meeting.
We will, I will authorize the, the engineer to finalize the plans.
Right, okay. I just want to be clear that we're all voting on here tonight or, you know, and that there is another meeting to fight the numbers or to look at better numbers.
There'll be a couple more.
Right, right, right. So, we're on track. Let's stay on track.
Thank you, Justin.
You're, you're more than welcome to show up at more meetings on Monday nights. How's that?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We.
Jim?
Yes, yes, Jack.
Jim, yeah. Um, I've been quiet and just listening and taking it all in here. I have a number of comments. Um, I, for one, do believe that we need to move forward with this, and I, I think by finalizing plans and getting bids back that we can review and decide what to do with them is a good plan. Um, I don't feel that this can be split, um, well, proportionately amongst six landowners plus the city. The city, obviously, we have the most to gain from this, and, secondly, the, uh, people that are doing developmental, development, develop, have developments are also benefiting. And that, that to me includes Cawtham, Peterson, and Oakland. Um, I know there's a couple spots that need to be, uh, safe fixed, that, uh, propose new intersection of Peterson Land, um, from what near as I can tell from the, the plan that is proposed to go all the way up into Oakland's, uh, Twin Rivers Development, uh, Dustin, uh, that does, does, does definitely benefit you. Um, if I was living up there, I wouldn't want to have only one access, uh, and then going out to the north with everybody else. So I think that is definitely, uh, something that needs to be resolved. Uh, your fifty-five foot, right away, I think there's, uh, you need to figure out what to do with that. It's obviously not just a house, it could also be a street if you could just get the additional property.
Get that for me, Jack, I'll take it.
Pardon me?
Get that land for me, I'll take it. I've been trying for five years.
Well, I think you need to hone, hone your negotiating skills, but that's just off the record thing, um, um, and, oh, I, I did have a question, Brian, when you said you included all the park, is that the entire park, all the, all field?
Yep. Option three includes.
All the way down to the north entrance?
Yep, option three includes.
How much of that is actually included?
That's all included on option three. Entire part, their entire square footage of the park is included.
Okay.
Yep.
Which obviously includes, uh, uh, new south area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Other questions, Jack?
Go ahead.
Do you have any other questions, otherwise?
Uh, no, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, sorry. So we're, we're voting for option three, so we can finalize the plans. Is it a done deal, it's going to bid, or is it just finalizing plans?
At the next meeting, I'll have a list of all the projects and their bid dates. I'll put it on there, so then, that would be the formal approval.
Okay. And even if we do go to bid, if it comes back, like, whoa, we can say, nope.
Correct.
Okay.
We would just reject the bids and rebid at a later date.
So we have a motion and a second to, uh, move to option three, move forward with the process. I assume we want to do a roll call vote on this?
Ken, if you want, you don't have to.
Don't have to? That's fine. All right, I don't know that we have to. All those in favor proceeding with those, those two items? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
He's just delayed.
Are you opposed, or are you slow on your aye, Jack?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm an aye.
Okay. I assumed you were, I just, we had a little delayed electronic techno, technology lapse. So, is that fairly clear? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, standing committee reports, we have a wage adjustment for Carrie Thill.
Correct.
She's the head coordinator at the golf course.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the wage increase for Carrie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bank stabilization project change order number two.
This is the final change order that balances out the quantities, and with this one, we reduce the contract amount by thirteen thousand two hundred, but we also add thirty-three days to their working days.
Guys, can we take the conversations outside, please? If you have, otherwise, it's hard to hear. Thank you. Go ahead, Tammy.
So it just decreases the contract amount by thirteen thousand two hundred, but then it also does add the thirty-three days for, uh, working days.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to, uh, for the change order. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye. Did you hear me ask that, Jim?
Yes, I did.
No?
Again, it's, it's sort of delayed, Jack, were you in favor of approval of the change order?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Okay. We'll take our time.
Slow down your cadence.
Yeah, I'll slow down mine. Item three, bank stabilization project pay application, fine, number five and the final.
So this is the final pay application for sixty-seven thousand one thirty-five seventy-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bank stabilization project, pay application number five and the final. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the pay applications signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Way to go, Jack, you got right in with them. Moving on to parks and rec, the work report is there. Purchase of a field groomer for the softball diamonds.
Uh, Parks Department has recommended the purchase of a turf war, of SmithCo infield groomer from Turf Works in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Motion to approve, it's in our budget.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the, um, purchase of a field groomer? Any questions, comments?
We almost had to be any cats.
We do. Ours are blue.
Those things are, those groomers are something else.
Are we gonna get painted blue for the city? Have they, get some cool stuff on there, correct?
There we go.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
All those in favor of the purchase of the field groomers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a, several items that need to be declared as surplus, I believe, three benches, chairs, tables.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to declare surplus property? All in favor?
It's below five hundred dollars.
It's below five hundred dollars. Jack, did you hear that? It's below five hundred, so, uh, any other?
Yeah, well, I'll bid nay, I found that fact.
It's yours. We will drop it off Monday.
Can you have it off Monday? Yeah.
A lot of development. Providence, New York.
Any other questions? All those in favor of declaring the surplus property, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, resolution, resolution thirty-three twenty-one, setting pool fees.
Uh, the only change here is adding non-refundable to the season pass area. We've taken this approach, um, it just wasn't on the resolution for some reason, and it's been on our summer rec fire, so it's just really adding that language in there, just so it's, it's noted. Uh, no changes to the actual fees.
Motion and a second on the setting of the pool fees, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution thirty-four twenty-one, setting park shelter fees.
Uh, this is just changing, so we have a daily rate, um, we don't have a lot that would do like a full day or seven hours or more, uh, but when we switched over to the new software system, we just added that in there. So it'd be an hourly, hourly rate, under seven hours, and then an all-day fee if it's seven hours or more.
A motion and a second to approve the, um, park shelter fees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aspen Park Project Change Order Number Three.
This is the final change order for the Aspen Park Project. Um, this one reduces the contract amount by ten thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Aspen Park Project Change Order, lowering it ten thousand dollars. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aspen Park Project Pay Application Number Three, the final.
Final pay application for thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the final Aspen Park Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Safety, twenty-twenty-two Fire Contract.
Can I add one thing really quick? Sorry, I didn't get on the agenda. I have a, a new employee who started back in September that I haven't gotten around to introducing, so I just wanted to introduce Nick Gundermann.
Ah.
He's been with us since then and doing a good job, so.
Welcome.
Welcome.
We asked for a five-minute speech.
After you sat for an hour and twenty minutes. Yeah, exactly. Poor guy.
Well, welcome. Okay, twenty-twenty-two Fire Contract.
Uh, this is the contract for twenty-twenty-two for, with the Brandon Fire Department for services. The budgeted amounts are included in there in, uh, red, uh, operations and maintenance, one hundred and thirteen thousand seven fifty-seven, and then capital equipment of one forty-one six oh three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the fire contract with the changes in red, noted on page ninety-nine. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, wage adjustment for Mr. Palmer.
Thank you very much.
He only shows up when he's on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second, uh.
Have a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment.
Somebody seconded it.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe we should just.
Not discussion.
You'll never come to another meeting, will you?
I had no choice.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is the ICC Code Adoption.
I know this is the item you've all been waiting for. Included in there is, uh, ordinance six fifty-three, which adopts the twenty-twenty-one International Building Code, International Existing Building Code, International Building Code with Amendments, the Property Maintenance Code, and International Pool and Spa Code, um, and all of the amendments that are approved by Sioux Falls, as you, as we talked about, um, Sioux, the, the ICC is adopted every three years, four years?
Yes, every three years.
Uh, Sioux Falls goes through it for a year, makes their amendments, and then we just piggyback on to what Sioux Falls does. So we're always a year behind on adopting the code. Um, and also included in there was asked at the briefing meeting if, uh, the building department could provide a summary of significant changes. That was included in the, in the pamphlets, or books that, uh, the building department received, so those were included as well. Any significant changes, if you noticed, I think they're addressing shipping containers and, what was the other one that I saw?
Oil.
Yeah, oil derricks. So, um, Paul Clark is here, if you have any questions on, on the ICC or significant changes to any of the codes.
I was.
Brian, did, uh, did we come up with a, uh, uh, worksheet of the changes, the significant changes, as you say?
Yeah, actually, the ICC included, uh, a summary of significant changes for both the ICC and the existing building, existing housing code. Uh, they were in the packets, uh, starting on page one eighty-eight.
Can you give me a second to get up there?
Yeah. Jack, it's Justin here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I just would like to add a few things to this. Um, the city of Sioux Falls, like Brian said, has adopted this, uh, or will adopt this soon. They, every year, every three years, put together a mandatory one-hour continuing education class for everyone who's licensed in Sioux Falls. I've been to the class, it was very informative. Um, I think it answered all your questions, Jack. But with that, one of the, there's not many changes, Jack, there's nothing to be concerned about, so hopefully that puts you at ease. Uh, one of the big changes is, or a lot of the changes are electrical, and so one of the issues we're having right now is Brandon is serviced by the state electrical inspector. They are currently so short-staffed, they have halted all final inspections. So they will grant you a rough-in inspection, and then go ahead and move in, we'll put you on a list, and we'll come check your final when we get to it. Um, it may be time to start looking at a, a Brandon City Electrical Inspector, just ma, more payroll, um, you know, more expenses, I just thought you'd like that, Jack.
Yeah, of course.
So anyway, there's no major changes, nothing to be concerned about, Jack. Uh, myself, as a builder, I'm happy with the new code. I think Paul, again, uh, or just for the record, Paul does a very good job, too, in the city, he's very responsive, um, nothing but good things to say about Paul.
Award-winning.
Award-winning.
Amazing. Award-winning.
Okay, are there any questions? I, I know it was, it was a, a lot of stuff I looked through, as much of it as I could make sense of, I'm certainly not a builder, but.
Didn't we have a distillery in town that had to be sprinkled?
Good to know.
It, I'm sorry.
If we have a distillery in town, it has to be sprinkled.
Well, that is good to know.
We have a part of the main.
Go ahead.
Turn on the mic, Paul.
With the ISO, Mike Whitey. Thank you.
With, if you're for real with ISO, Brian did a great job for me, I, I could've stayed at home tonight, but, anyway, um, so the ISO, um, is an insurance services organization, they come and rate cities, and every five years they come, and one of the first questions they ask are, what, what building code are you under? If you're under a code that's not currently on the national code, then they're gonna mark you down, and that will affect homeowners' rates and commercial owners' rates for insurance, so we always want to be up to speed. And, and the codes, you know, just as, um, uh, Justin said, uh, it, it's technology changes, building code, architects, there's a lot of input around the country and stuff, but we all want to stay right with, with, with where everybody else is, so. Um, the only one we're gonna hold off was in the plumbing, because at the state level, um, the State Plumbing Commission is not deciding which code they're gonna go with at this point, so everybody's in a holding pattern, but all the rest, I'm gonna move forward, and we would adopt ours, uh, just a month after Sioux Falls, so, two, 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 so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the ICC Code Adoption. Any other questions? Thank you, Paul. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I think that was four. Moving on, the administrative reports. We have a termination, Brian?
Correct, with the hiring of the full-time assistant finance officer, we will let the part-time office assistant go at the end of the year.
Okay.
Do you have a motion for that?
Yep.
Second.
A motion and a second to eliminate the assistant office position. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution thirty-five twenty-one, contingency transfer.
So we build in a contingency every year into the budget, and then from time to time, we'll transfer those into whatever line item is needed. Right now, we're looking at legal. We've had some increase in legal fees, it'll do largely in part to annexation and some cannabis, I should say, some cannabis, a lot of cannabis. Yes. Insurance, we've seen an increase in construction projects, as we've increased the construction projects, our insurance increases. And then the inspection department just, and a change in an employee plan. So there's no, the contingency is built into the budget, so there's no financial considerations, just moving that money.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the movement of the contingency monies. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution thirty-six twenty-one, setting fees for Safety Town Program.
One thing I want to bring up is, Christina, you weren't here, but Barb and Dana asked about it being non-refundable, and I'm like, that's probably more, because that's more work on you, right? Like, if someone decides to cancel last minute, and then you have to try to refund it, I mean, what do you think? The reason why we kind of put this in, last year was free, it was our first year doing it, this, but after having several drop out, we thought to help kind of, because each kid gets a T-shirt and stuff like that, to kind of help offset the cost of that and just making, you guys know I made a lot of copies, too.
You could set a deadline, like a week before it's non-refundable. For swimming lessons, we don't. Or, you know, yeah, you can substitute somebody in there. I'm good either way.
I find, whatever, they, they just made a good point, like, oh, yeah, I don't want to create more work for you.
You know, we don't, the summer rec program is non-refundable, correct?
Summer rec, there's no charge.
There's no charge, yeah. To make it consistent, you could.
I would do what you did.
Have a motion to pass resolution thirty-six twenty-one with a non-refundable twenty-dollar fee.
Okay. I make a motion to pass with the non-refundable fee added to it, just.
We can add that in.
Motion and a second to pass the resolution setting the Safety Town Fee with a non-refundable clause. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recipient, subrecipient agreement with CCOG for MPO activities.
The MPO will reimburse twenty, up to twenty-five thousand dollars of the city engineer's wages for planning work that is performed for MPO functions.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement with CCOG. Any other questions, comments?
Comments, thanks Tammy for saving up the money.
Thank you, that's right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brian, we have a resignation?
Yep, Dennis Olson, who's been our part-time economic development director, has submitted his resignation effective December thirty-first. We'll meet with, or we've met with, representatives from the Brandon Development Foundation to work through how we're going to coordinate with them.
We need to at least acknowledge all of the service that Dennis has given to this community, it's, and we've been very fortunate. Have a motion and a second to approve the resignation for Mr. Olson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Work Report on Streets. We have a new employee.
Yes, Michael Dorn Camper, in the public works department, at a starting wage of nineteen oh seven an hour, starting January third or fourth.
Move to approve, huh? I'll, I'll second that, Dave. Okay, I'll move to approve, yeah, there we go.
We have a motion and a second to approve the hiring. Any other questions? In the budget? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rushmore Project Pay Application Number Eight.
They are finished with construction for the year, so they'll pick up next spring and do some of those small items like seating and replacing cracked sidewalk. A couple of things that they still have to do yet this year are things like adding the generator to the lift station. So there'll still be some work going on out there, but overall, construction is complete.
Looks really nice. We have a motion and a second to approve the Rushmore Pay Project Application Number Eight. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rushmore Area Phase Two Final Design Proposal for, from DGR.
So if you remember, we're doing core and Rushmore Area opposite of each other, so this year's construction in core area, which means it's designed in Rushmore Area. So that would be that phase two for Kirkwood, and then the rest of Yellowstone and Cedar. And that amount is two hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Is there just two phases in Rushmore?
No, there's four.
I never. Silver was like seven or something.
Silver took ten.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Phase Two Final Design. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Core Area Overlay Project Design Proposal from DGR.
This last summer, we did an overlay project on Fourth Avenue, which seemed to turn out really well, so I'd like to propose that we do that for Fifth and Sixth. In the packet, there are those side streets shown in there. I want to do a little bit more investigating on that, on if we really should be overlaying some of that, as the street right now acts as our storm sewer, and we don't want to take away all the capacity of the street. And I realize that it is pretty rough right now, but this is just a Band-Aid fix until we can get there with the rest of the core projects.
Are you talking about Cedar?
Yeah.
Are we gonna, are we gonna also send a letter like we did last time, just telling them that we realize this is a Band-Aid fix, but it?
Yes.
I, I do, I drove down, I thought it was a little bit nicer, though, what they had, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's not perfect, but.
It's a lot better. Just know it's not gonna last very long.
Right, but at least it's, yeah.
Something to get them by.
It's smoother, yes, for now.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Core Area Overlay Project Design. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Joint Repair Project.
This is one project that didn't get a hundred percent completed this last year. They did probably about two-thirds of Holly Boulevard, and then they quit due to school starting. So next year, they'll pick it up in the spring when school is out, and then they still have the portion on Aspen Boulevard to do as well.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the pay application, is this in the amount of two oh six?
In the amount of two oh six, four seventy-three and seventy cents.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, Raleigh, thank you to your guys for coming down our streets again and taking out the mogul path I had in my, on Hackberry, it was awesome. I appreciate it.
I would second that for like all of them. My husband was home, he's like, it's awesome, the cities are out here, I mean, when it got really slushy there before that, so thank you for doing that, whoever. Yeah, that was really nice.
That's always a question that Raleigh and I talk about, is replowing.
Yeah.
Because unfortunately, you do push that into people's driveways again, and it does create some issues from time to time, but it was with the rain coming.
Yeah.
We thought it was very prudent to get out there and, and get that stuff off.
I'm glad you did. Otherwise, you'd get those bad rucks.
Three washed all the stuff from the driveway.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Water and Sewer Wage Adjustment for Dustin Wagner.
Dustin's a worker in our maintenance department, making a step movement to twenty-seventy-one an hour.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Dean, Dustin Wagner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water Tower. Pay Application Number Seven.
This is the, yeah, seventh pay application for the water tower. It looks like there's not much work going on out there at the site, but they are still fabricating the bowl, and they'll probably be delivering that in probably mid-February. They continue doing their utility work in the golf course parking lot, and then they're still working on the booster station along Redwood, too. So they're doing plenty of construction on that project yet.
Vote for it.
Have a motion and a second on the water tower pay application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. ARPA Funding.
Is everybody ready to be confused?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
As we've talked about from time to time, the state is anticipating receiving about six hundred million in ARPA funds. Very similar guidelines from the original ARPA funds a year ago. They can be, the easiest place to put them is for sewer and water improvements. The funds have to be expended by twenty-twenty-six. Our allocation of that six hundred million might be around ten million, nine point nine to ten million. At this point in time, we've got a January one application deadline for a project. We've asked CCOG to submit that application for the water treatment plant, which is a one-time, pretty easy project to do. You know, the restriction is that we can use ARPA funds to fund thirty percent of the project. So depending on when we get the bids in, if the council wants to just renovate the plant or expand the capacity of the plant, or if you want to include the RO portion, it would be a third of whatever that cost is. Any funds that we don't use out of our allocation on the, on the water treatment plant could be used towards the core project, or the Rushmore Projects, or the West Side Trunk, or the East Side Trunk. So if. What, what we looked at was, if we don't use the funds on the water treatment plant, we probably won't be able to use all of our allocation, because of that thirty percent project restriction. We.
So with that, I have a question, if we do, like you said, there's a possibility, then if we could use, get the RO option, and that would even bring, I mean, I know that's a concern with the cost to the residents, but if we are able to get that money, then that cost necessarily that associated with RO wouldn't have to be passed on?
Correct.
Right, to the residents?
Depending on if you want the RO treatment or not, if, if we just expand the plant, not including the RO treatment, our estimated ARPA funding would be about four point two million. If we included the RO portion, we would be eligible for about six point six million. So.
It would bring down the, if you use ARPA funding and bring down the bond, which would reduce the surcharge to the residents.
Correct.
Because I think that was the big, I guess, it's been a while since I've talked about this, but wasn't that with the RO, is that it was a lot more to the residents, and was it worth it? But now, if we get money and it's not gonna be increased.
Yeah, we'd be looking at, I think, the last cost estimate, if we just did the plant expansion, it was about fourteen or fifteen million, if I remember right, and if we included the RO, it'd be about twenty to twenty-one million. So either way, it's, it will bring down that surcharge, and that's how we'll pay for that significantly. And this, like I said, if we don't use the ARPA funding here, highly unlikely that we can spend it all by twenty-twenty-six.
Can't cash flow, because we certainly have the projects for it.
We've got the projects, it's, it's about debt capacity. We don't, we don't have the debt capacity to borrow enough money to get our allocation. And since the water treatment plant is a surcharge, or we're planning to do a surcharge, it doesn't go against our debts or, or our debt capacity. So we're good.
Okay.
So Brian, this is Jack. If I understand what you're saying there, if we add the RO, it wouldn't affect the surcharge, it would not increase the surcharge on the.
If, if. There would, there would be an increase in the surcharge if the RO was added, with the ARPA funds, it just won't be as much. Yeah, it, you know, looking, looking.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. Right now, cost estimate, latest cost estimate I saw on construction costs were about fourteen million, oh, there we go, thank you. Fourteen, fourteen million for just upgrading the plant, and we would be eligible for about four point four million in ARPA funds for that. If you include the RO, which is another seven point six million in construction costs, you're looking at twenty-one point eight, so the ARPA allocation would be six point six. So it's, it would still, the surcharge will still increase with the RO, but not as much if we didn't use the ARPA funds.
Or be huge.
Can you tell me how much it'd increase for a quarter?
Haven't, haven't looked at that yet. We can certainly get some cost estimate, or some, some estimates, do you?
Didn't plan on looking at that until we actually get the bids.
Right, right. It's just saying that we have.
This is just really, you want to authorize the mayor to sign the documents for the application for the water treatment plant, that's what we need tonight.
You need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion and a second to approve the application for the ARPA funding. Any other questions, anyone has? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We do need executive session to discuss.
So we'll move into motion.
Motion, the motion.
Motion to go in. Second.